Okay, folks, it is 6:00 PM. So we will begin this committee of the whole on Tuesday, September 2nd, calling the meeting to order. And we'll start with our land acknowledgement. With gratitude, the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands acknowledges these lands and waters are the traditional territory of the Algonquin, Mississauga's Mohawk and Huron-Windat. To recognize the role the township must play in truth and reconciliation, we also acknowledge the displacement of these peoples. Additionally, the township would like to respectfully acknowledge that the First Nations Inuit and Métis peoples, who also call this place home, continue to do so. We make this land acknowledgement to honor the indigenous ancestors who have stewarded these lands and waters since time immemorial. So we'll move forward with the adoption of the agenda. 3.1 motion comes forward from councillor Maybe, seconded by councillor Antoine Hartley, that the agenda be adopted as circulated. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. So I got started a little early. Without making a reference to councillor Lackey is on his way, he'll just be a few minutes late. So we'll move on to number four, declaration of care interest and general nature thereof. Does anyone have an interest to declare? I have no hands up. So we'll move forward with number five, which is closed session and there is done, and then on to delegations. So 6.1, which is Andrew Geldart. Andrew will be presenting to council regarding parking bylaw number 23-064, specifically Ivy Lee Road Parking. So if I can ask you to come to the podium and can you, Phil, can you make sure that the microphone's on for him there, please? And thank you. Excellent. There we go. Thank you.
Well, good evening. My name's Andrew Geldart. I live at 201 Ivy Lee Road. I would like to bring to your attention our concerns regarding the new parking restrictions on the Ivy Lee Road. My family has owned property in Ivy Lee for over 125 years. In that time, we have never experienced one problem or complaint regarding parking. I'm asking for two parking exemptions. Our property located at 214 Ivy Lee Road that has had a total of at least seven tenants who have always parked well off the road with no issues ever raised. The current tenant works nights, usually back at home between 2:30 and 4:00 AM in the morning. Surely she cannot be expected to park her vehicle across from the boat ramp and walk alone the half a kilometer back to her residence. It is dangerous and unacceptable. Other arrangements have been made for her vehicle during the winter months to accommodate snow, you know, snowplow removal. We have seen various large vehicles going up and down the Ivy Lee Road on a regular basis. This includes ambulances, telephone, landstone telephone, fire trucks, hydro crews, Campbell's pumping service, and garbage pickup trucks, delivery and moving vans, and others. There's never been a problem. The other exemption we would like to see is at the bottom of our stairs across from our house at 201 Ivy Lee Road. This set of stairs leads to our two summer rental properties on the hill. This area is well off the road and is paved. Some of our summer tenants have mobility issues and park at the bottom of the stairs so it's easier for them to get to their boats. We also have assistance with some of our landscaping needs and there is occasionally a half ton truck with a trailer and their equipment, which are well off the road and would have no other place to park. I understand that some exemptions have been made to residents in Rockport, and I ask that you grant these two exemptions. I realize that there may be some issues near the entrance of city cruises and the boat ramp. But those of us who live east of that location have no issues at all. These parking restrictions also mean that our grandchildren could never come over to visit and enjoy the river in the summer because there was no place for them to park their vehicle. They were also they were always able to park at the bottoms of stairs on a paved road, well off to the side and away from any passing traffic. I think this is a very sad reflection on some residents along the Ivy Lee Road who have not considered the real effects of these ridiculous and totally unnecessary limitations. None of us really understand why these issues have been raised to address a situation that does not exist. Hopefully, our exemptions will be granted before other actions might have to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. So since this is a delegation, this is not up for debate, but is, if anybody has any questions in regards to the presentation or any further questions for clarification, please raise your hand so that you can ask those at this time. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship and through you. I am not exactly familiar with what the parking situation was on there in that section and what it has been changed to. So if someone could, I don't know if Director of Operations or if someone could just briefly go over that for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you through your worship. Previous to the bylaw being put into place, there were no restrictions on the road. The challenge with that is that the road, I think at its widest point, is four meters wide. So it doesn't allow for two lanes of traffic to pass on the road. So, you know, at that opportunity or with that challenge, the parking restrictions were put in place.
So we have a map of where it is in Ivy Lee. If you'd like to, can you zoom in on that?
So lot 201, this property here, there is three parking spaces on that property currently. This is the other property that was described, 201. It has an area of approximately three acres, although there is a bit of a grade differential. There could be alterations to the property. There's significant stairs that go up here, but the side of the property is a little bit lower from a grade perspective. This property as well, this is the area of the parking, I believe, that's being referenced. And so the road in this area is very narrow. It is a bottlenecked area. And so there have been additional no parking signs erected this summer. The parking bylaw was passed in 2023. And there has been enforcement along the roadway this summer in response to complaints that have been received.
Any other comments in regards to our questions? If you'd like to respond, go ahead.
Basically, all the complaints have been at the west end of the road where the buses come in, go to city cruises. Once you get past, basically, the government docks, that's what I still call. There's no problem with parking, you know. We have have and haven't had any problems with, you know, vehicles going up and down the road and this and that. And this is just the bylaw might be on the books, but I mean, you're just catering to a very select few at the west end of the road and just inconveniencing everybody else. So, you know, bylaws are one thing, but common sense has to prevail. So.
So just for clarity purposes, Director Holiday, I believe there was another report coming back in regards to the issues in Ivy Lee. And I believe that we were going to be looking at, we were looking at consultation in regards to that roadway and what have you. Can you further expand on that just as a response that this will not just be stopping here tonight? Go ahead.
Yes. So I think what was raised by councillor Lackey was to do a functional review of the road. Given that how long the road is, as an example, you know, in some municipalities, the it's one exit, one entrance to the road. There's typically secondary egress after a certain length of road. Once you get, like the city of Kingston as an example, once the road gets beyond 150 meters, then they do require secondary access to that. We don't currently have that at this location, which does pose challenges, you know, if there is a blockage on the road and there's an incident at the back, there is no other way to access the back of the road. And that's, I think what increases the risk and the severity, the health and safety concerns here is that there is no access to get around those vehicles, you know, no alternate route currently. If there was something at the back end of the road. So the plan is to look at that and see what needs to be done in order to improve that access and what right of way we have.
That will also identify the pinch points that exist along the roadway where the parking, where the parking bylaw signage is up and how it goes on either side. That's part of the full thing.
That's correct.
Councillor Grohl, did you have your hand up? Oh, sorry. I thought I saw it. Go ahead, Andy.
Well, basically, there is a second entrance to Ivy, actually, there's two more to Ivy Lee, the right of ways, which instead of, you know, there's been talk of extending the the road through village estates and this and that and everything else. It would be minimal to just put some gravel down on these right of ways, not make them into paved roads or anything like that, but people would be able to get in and out in ambulances and all this sort of stuff. It's quite easy. And basically from 180 Ivy League Road down to the east, I mean, it's single lane traffic. So, I mean, no one parks along, along the road. I mean, unless they're off the road. So you couldn't park on the road. So.
So I just bring that up to let you know that there'll be further discussion in regards to this.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll move forward. Thank you very much for your presentation. We'll move forward with number 6.2. Bill Kroski? Is Mr. Kroski here? Mr. Kroski? Is Mr. Kroski online? Nope. Okay. So we will move forward, since Mr. Kroski is not here, to number seven, which is briefings, and we have no briefings this evening. Moving on to the public meeting, which is 8.1 motion to call the public meeting to order. And that comes from Deputy Mayor Foddy, seconded by councillor Antoine Hartley, that the September 2nd, 2025 public meeting is called to order. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. So we'll move forward with 8.2 zoning bylaw amendment application D14-2025-006405 Downey Island. Madam Planner.
Thank you. And through you. So this is an application for zoning bylaw amendment for the property municipally known as 405 Downey Island. The application is proposing a special exception island residential zone to facilitate the reconstruction of an existing sleeping cabin on a larger footprint. The size of the proposed sleeping cabin is 41 square meters with 19 square meters of attached uncovered decking. The existing and proposed setback of the sleeping cabin from the high watermark of the St. Lawrence River is 13 meters. There is an existing second sleeping cabin located on the property that's proposed to be converted to an accessory structure. Should this application be approved, it will be subject to site plan control. Notice of the public meeting has been provided in accordance with the Planning Act and staff have not received any written correspondence with respect to the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Planner. So I'm just going to read the public meeting preamble and then I'll call the planners up. Excuse me. Personal information collected at this public hearing is collected under the authority of the Planning Act and will be used to assist in making a decision on this matter. All names, addresses, opinions, and comments are collected and form part of the minutes which are available to the public. Questions regarding this collection should be forwarded to the Director of Planning. For the purpose of public meetings, it is to present applications in a public forum. Following presentations by applicant or staff, council members will be afforded an opportunity to ask questions for clarification or further information. The meeting will then be open to the public for comments and questions. When you speak, please provide your name and address for recording in the minutes. All comments should be directed to the Chair of the meeting. The applicant will be provided the opportunity to address public questions once all members of the public have made their submissions. Following council's decision, notice will be circulated in accordance with the Planning Act. If a specified person or public body would otherwise have an ability to appeal the decision of the council of the corporation of the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands to the Ontario Land Tribunal, but the specified person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the township before the bylaw is passed, the specified person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision. Now that I've got that off the books, please come forward. There we go. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and through your worship. My name is Nolan Adebury and I'm a planner at Photon Playing and Design. I am joined by my colleague, Kelsey Jones, who's a senior planner at Photon. And Photon Playing Design has been retained on behalf of the property owner, Zach Baraz, to present this zoning bylaw amendment application. We will be available following the presentation to answer any questions you may have. The site is located at 405 Downey Island and has an area of approximately 0.5 hectares with approximately 55 meters of waterfrontage on the St. Lawrence River. The site does not have frontage on a public road and is accessible by boat access only from the St. Lawrence River. The property is currently developed with a two-story cottage, two one-story sleeping cabins, several accessory structures, including sheds and an outhouse, and two docks along the shoreline, as you can see in the image to the right. The site is currently serviced by an existing private septic system and water intake from the St. Lawrence River. The site is mostly treed and contains varied topography with areas of natural bare rock in proximity to the shoreline. And the site steps down and towards the shoreline of the St. Lawrence River, which creates a natural separation from the site to the water, as can be seen on the image to the left. The site neighbors similar waterfront properties to the east and west. Can you see the application or the presentation all right? Or can I change the? So the site is designated rural lands in the United Counties of Leeds and Granville Official Plan, which permits resource-based recreational uses, including recreational dwellings. The site is designated rural in the Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands Official Plan and is located in the Special Policy Area, Thousand Islands and south of Highway 401. The designations permit a range of residential uses, including single detached dwellings and support the protection of lands from overdevelopment while providing appropriate recreational opportunities. The site is currently zoned island residential zone, which permits single detached dwellings and one sleeping cabin per lot. The intent of the application is to demolish the existing southern sleeping cabin on the site to be reconstructed with an enlarged 41-square-meter sleeping cabin. The sleeping cabin will also feature a 19-square-meter uncovered deck oriented towards the St. Lawrence River. The proposed sleeping cabin will be located in roughly the same location as the existing southern cabin and will maintain the existing front setback and high watermark setback on the site. The expanded floor area proposed is proposed to be located to the north, farther from the St. Lawrence River. The proposed setback from the high watermark will be 13 meters from the uncovered deck attached to the sleeping cabin and 15 meters from the proposed sleeping cabin's front wall. The proposed enlarged sleeping cabin is anticipated to connect to the existing onsite septic system and water intake. The proposed development will also include decommissioning the northern sleeping cabin on the site and converting that cabin to an accessory storage building. This will, in effect, decrease the number of sleeping cabins on the site from two to one, complying with the zone requirements. A zoning bylaw amendment is required to establish a special exception island residential zone for the site, which will establish appropriate performance standards for the proposed sleeping cabin. The special exception zone will permit a minor increase to the maximum floor area for the cabin of 41 square meters, where the zoning bylaw currently permits a maximum floor area of 30 square meters for a sleeping cabin. The zoning bylaw amendment will also permit a reduced front yard setback and reduced high watermark setback of 15 meters to the proposed sleeping cabin's front wall and 13 meters to the associated uncovered deck. The zoning bylaw requires a 30-meter setback from the high watermark and a 30-meter front yard setback measured to the shoreline. I will note that while an amendment is requested to reduce the minimum front yard and high watermark setbacks, the proposed development will not result in development closer to the front yard or high watermark setback beyond what currently exists. The site also features rocky terrain near the shoreline, which provides significant elevation increase from the shoreline up to the site. The rocky terrain stepping up to the site creates a natural separation between the development and the high watermark, reducing potential hazard impacts or development impacts to the shoreline. The proposed setbacks reflect the existing pattern of development along the waterfront on Downey Island and maintains compatibility with the surrounding area. The applicant is seeking a zoning bylaw amendment to facilitate the reconstruction of an existing sleeping cabin on the site. The proposed development will result in the net reduction of sleeping cabins on the site from two to one through the conversion and decommissioning of the existing northern sleeping cabin to an accessory structure. In summary, the proposed development represents good land use planning as it supports locally appropriate recreational development and avoids natural heritage, natural hazard impacts or impacts to the St. Lawrence River. The proposed development is consistent with the provincial planning statement and conforms to the County of Leeds and Granville Official Plan and the Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands Official Plan. This concludes my presentation and my colleague and I will be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Questions for the presenter? Go ahead. Deputy Mayor Foddy, then councillor Maybe, and any other hands? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, worship through you. I didn't see anything in here that's going to decommission the outhouse after the expansion of sleeping cabin. Is that the intent to leave that there and be used?
I'm not aware that the outhouse will be decommissioned, but I will note that a septic review will be required prior to any construction on the site. So any sort of septic impacts will be reviewed prior to issuing building permits.
Hello?
Please, thank you, worship through you, to our senior planner. Is that the requirement when there's an expansion or change of accommodation that a septic has to be addressed? Is that true?
Through you, it's my understanding that there is a septic system that's proposed to support the development on the site.
Sorry. So that is true. If there's an expansion of accommodation, the septic has to be
sized.
The same, you know, have to be able to.
Through the building permit process, it'll be reviewed in terms of sizing and its current condition to make sure that it's adequate to support the, you know, expanded floor area of the sleeping cabin as well as the main dwelling.
If I may, thank you, worship through you, to our senior planners again. When I was reading this, it's seldom we come across the outhouses that have existed over the decades. Are they to be decommissioned when there's a septic system available? Or is there some kind of a provision for them to be used in certain circumstances?
I'm going to go to the Director of Planning and save Lindsay from that question.
Okay.
I'll turn to Marnie.
Thank you through you. We have been looking into that. That's more of a building code issue in terms of whether or not the outhouse is allowed to continue to exist. We've been consulting with the ministry on that matter, but we don't have a clear answer at this point. So it's something that will be reviewed in the context of septic system review that was referenced by the applicant's representative.
Okay. Well, I was just reflecting back several decades when I go and I worked on the river installing septic systems. And there were frequent outhouses in locations then. And I know that's not the case anymore, but I was just for my own clarity, I was wanting those questions. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, councillor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. I have a few questions. The existing cottage size, I didn't quite capture it on the, on the plan, what it is in square meters.
I don't have that off the top of my head, although I can refer to the staff report. If the planners have that information, I can also defer to them.
Go ahead.
Through you, it's just a bit over 27 square meters, is my understanding.
The main cottage.
The main cottage?
Oh, the main dwelling?
Okay. Looking at the plan here, it seems that the existing cottage is 98.7 square meters.
98.7. Okay, thank you. Secondly, the elevation from the water surface to the, to the ground at the front of the deck. And again, setback for high water, that's why I asked this question. Do you know roughly how high that differential is?
Again, I'll have to review, but as I'm reviewing, I'll just, I'll just say that the elevation of the high watermark has been prepared on this plan. Maybe I can.
I just, the numbers didn't quite.
Okay.
I couldn't quite read them when they were there, and that's why I'm asking. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it does, does count, again, high water setback and all that, you know, depending on the slope of the ground. And that's why I was going with how high that is.
Yes. And I will note that the high water setback is measured to a, it's in reference to a change of vegetation on the site rather than a slope. And I will also say that the Cataract Region Conservation Authority has reviewed the proposed setbacks for flooding and other erosion hazards, and that is appropriate. But I will, I will review and get that elevation to you.
Excellent. One of the other things I found kind of interesting in this design is that the shower is actually outside of the normal dwelling, which I found kind of interesting. And then secondary to that, sleeping cabins aren't to have a kitchen in them, right? But we do have a small sink in this on a countertop.
Yes, that is correct.
I'll go to the planner in regards to that.
Thank you through you. So in terms of what's permitted in a sleeping cabin, we we have drawn the line at cooking facilities. So it's appropriate to have, you know, a small sink and maybe a beverage fridge, but anything regarding cooking facilities is prohibited. And we review floor plans to ensure that. And this property, you know, if the zoning amendment is approved, it'll be subject to site plan control. And so we'll have the ability to add additional conditions in that agreement to ensure that the sleeping cabin fits within the definition approved in the zoning bylaw.
Excellent. Thank you. And then one last thing to Deputy Mayor's point about the outhouse being there and with a full-on bathroom in this facility and the cottage and the septic system there, they're all tied together. So the outhouse would only be a, maybe a winter use. So it wouldn't be something, you know, even my own property, I have one, it's more there for decoration than anything else. But anyways, thank you.
Any other questions in regards to 8.2 zoning bylaw amendment application D14-2025-006? I have one, I just, last call for council members. And then I have one online. Jesse Hamlin. So Jesse, we just unmuted you. So if you'd like to add anything or ask a question, please go forward.
I was just going to say that I am the property owner and I was going to, like others, the outhouse is not a functioning outhouse. It is to come down as is one of the sheds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation. We'll move forward with 8.3 zoning bylaw amendment application D14-2025- application D fourteen, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, one oh four Thousand Islands Parkway.
Thank you, through you. So this is a zoning bylaw amendment application for the properties municipally known as one hundred and one oh four Thousand Islands Parkway. There was a provisionally approved consent, a lot addition, that application that was approved involving these lands. And one of the recommended conditions for full approval is that the severed lands be rezoned from the existing special exception institutional zone to a rural zone to match the existing zoning of the receiving lands. So it is proposed to rezone the severed lands, which are shown highlighted in red on this key map, as well as the lands shaded in gray to a special exception rural zone. And that zone would also recognize the existing lot area of the enlarged property, which would be zero point four six hectares. There is no proposed development associated with the application. In terms of notice of the public meeting, this has been provided in accordance with the Planning Act, and staff have not received any written comments with respect to the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions in regards to this application? No hands up? Okay. That was an easy one. So we'll move to eight point four, motion to close the public meeting. And the motion comes from Counselor Maybe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Foddy, that the public meeting be closed. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Thank you very much for the applicants for being here and answering any questions this evening. Moving forward with staff reports, nine point one zoning bylaw amendment, application D fourteen, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six, four oh five Downey Island. It's moved by Counselor Antoine Hartley, seconded by Counselor Maybe, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve zoning bylaw amendment application D fourteen dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six for the property municipally known as four oh five Downey Island, amending the existing island residential RI zone of the property to an island residential special exception thirty-eight RI thirty-eight zone, and that the committee of the whole recommends that council further amend bylaw number zero seven dash zero seven nine, zoning bylaw of the corporation, the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands, as amended as per exhibit F, draft bylaw and schedule A to report number twenty twenty-five dash zero six zero, and that the committee of the whole recommends that council grant three readings and final passage to the amending bylaw. Discussion on the motion. I have no hands up? Okay, I will call the question, all those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item is zoning bylaw amendment, application D fourteen dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, one oh four Thousand Islands Parkway, moved by Counselor Kelman, seconded by Counselor Gurrell, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve zoning bylaw amendment, application number D fourteen dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven, to rezone portions of the property municipally known as one oh four Thousand Islands Parkway, from institutional special exception one, I one to zone to rural RU fifty-seven zone, and the property municipally known as one hundred thousand Islands Parkway, from rural RU zone to rural special exception fifty-seven RU fifty-seven zone in the township zoning bylaw number zero seven dash zero seven nine, and that the committee of the whole recommends that council further amend bylaw number zero seven dash zero seven nine, zoning bylaw on the corporation of the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands, as amended as per exhibit E, recommended amending bylaw and schedule A to report number twenty twenty-five dash zero five nine, and that the committee of the whole recommends that council grant three readings and final passage to the amending bylaw. Discussion on this motion. I have no hands up, therefore I'll call the question, all those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item, nine point three Rita Corridor Landscape Strategy Steering Committee, moved by Counselor Gurrell, seconded by Counselor Kelman, but the committee of the whole recommends that council appoint blank as delegate to the Rita Corridor Landscape Strategy Steering Committee and Lindsay Lambert, senior planner, as the alternate member. Volunteers. Wonderful, that was easy. Anybody else want to fight Counselor Antoine Hartley for that appointment? I don't see any hands up. You are the winner. Thank you. Okay, so the motion with the name in it reads that the committee of the whole recommends that council appoint Counselor Antoine Hartley as the delegate to the Rita Corridor Landscape Strategy Steering Committee and Lindsay Lambert, senior planner, as the alternate member. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item, moved by Counselor Kelman, seconded by Counselor Gurrell, that committee of the whole recommends that council approve the clerk's recommendation to move to a fully electronic by telephone and internet voting for the twenty twenty-six municipal election. That the committee of the whole recommends that council approve two advanced in-person electronic by telephone and internet voting locations and two in-person electronic by telephone and internet voting locations on election day. And that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve sole sourcing and televote systems, Inc., for the provision of e-voting services in the twenty twenty-six municipal election and direct staff to move forward with other municipalities within the United Counties of Leeds and Granville to engage their services. Motion's on the floor, up for discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Gurrell.
Through you, your worship, I was somewhat confused when we say we're gonna have two available spots, and it was for in-person voting electronically. So we're eliminating, if I got this right, you want to eliminate paper ballot. So then Grandma comes in to vote because she doesn't have a phone and she's not very savvy with internet. Describe to me the process. Thank you.
Certainly, through your worship. So by moving fully to a an electronic election, we would still have in-person voting stations. Staff will be trained to help individuals that do need help to navigate through internet voting. So there will be computer stations, possibly tablets. We're going to utilize the electronics that we currently have within the township, so that's not a cost to us. And instead of putting a checkmark on a paper ballot, it will be tapping a screen or moving a mouse to vote for those candidates that the elect or the voter wishes to vote for.
Follow up.
And who? So who's in the booth? And who's in front of that screen? Is it is it a family member helping Granny? Or is it staff member helping Granny? How's that work?
Sure, certainly. So even with paper ballots, staff are trained and they are under confidentiality. We sign everything as returning officers, deputy returning officers and any election officials. So it is completely confidential. We are non-influential. It would one hundred percent be a staff member. It would not be a family member, a friend, a neighbor, anybody but a staff member.
Okay. And just can you highlight again, although I read the report, can just highlight because it was a big deal, both elections that you've cited in here? And I will say that the second election was just voter apathy, nothing less, with the turnout of thirty percent plus, and that was reflected in all of Ontario, I would also say. Can you just highlight again? So we're gonna have electronic voting.
That's correct.
We're gonna have by phone or with a televote, which I support in televote. They do most of Ontario. Last election, they did, I don't know, one hundred and forty-four municipalities. So we're gonna have that plus two days advanced. And on the day of the vote, what do we have for the walk-ins?
Sure, so we're going to have, if council chooses, that is part of the resolution. So we'll have two advance polls, one in the north, one in the south. We'll see if they'll be the same day. They may be different days, just to be able to staff them. And then on day of voting for walk-ins, we'll also have in-person voting. It will, if council wishes, it will be electronic, but there will be in-person voting on the day of election day, one in the north, one in the south.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, I have Counselor Lackey and then Counselor Kelman.
Thank you, worship, and through you. It sounds to me, and it may be presumptuous, but it sounds to me like there's just as much effort from staff going into electronic as there would be paper ballot. So I I'm not sure I understand using that as rationale to simplify things. And we're simply here at at the will of of the voters. And from what I hear, I think we should leave well enough alone and provide the paper ballots and carry on. If there's any other way they would like to vote, I would love to give it to them. If they want to vote by smoke signal, I suggest we make it happen. So I'm against eliminating paper ballots.
Okay. Amendment to the, go ahead, Counselor Kelman.
Thank you, worship, and through you. I am in support of this. My only concern is access. So I I don't know if other municipalities that have already made this change. So if someone doesn't isn't able to do it from home, but also have transportation issues and aren't able to get to a location, is there any sort of? Is there any sort of assistance that we as a municipality would provide? Or would that be up to community groups or family members or neighbors to look after that?
Certainly, through your worship. So whether it's paper or electronic in person, they're still having to come here. We can look at an accessibility bus, renting that out or something to to facilitate that. I know in the past, and I do plan on doing this as well, this next coming election, that there is a usually an advance polling at one of the retirement homes. So that alleviates some of those transportation barriers.
Yep, go ahead. Yeah, I was just, if I'm if I remember correctly, when we had paper ballots before, you could send them by mail, you could return them by mail.
The last few elections, there was no ballot.
Okay, okay.
That was not.
So there isn't, in terms of accessibility, then there's no change really from the last.
It's exactly the same, only you don't have a paper ballot. You have an electronic device in front of you.
Thank you.
I have Deputy Mayor, and then I'll go back to Counselor Gurrell. And then Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, worship and through you. My thoughts lean with Counselor Lackey. Historically, we can go back to two thousand and fourteen where there's a tumultuous election voting day in this township, and that's history. I just as soon leave it there. But nonetheless, it's not gone in the minds of those that were involved. There was who knows how many people walked out of the ballot voting stations that day just in anger that they were forced to vote electronically in a number of places because we didn't have ballots. It turns out we had all kinds of them right here in this building. Just on a side note, if I remember the last municipal election, we did not have a north polling station the day of the election. I would like that verified because I remember the day of the election, we had one at the fire hall in Gatton Aqui and one here. I don't know whether it was at the fire hall. I think it was over at the community building. But the voters in the north, the only way they could vote locally was to vote in the advance poll. So I'd like to strongly recommend for the voters in the north that when they have a polling station on election day in the north, the accessibility. I know I'm old school, but I don't like using money as an excuse for why somebody doesn't have the choice, like Counselor Lackey alluded to, to vote the way they choose. Money would be the least of my concerns when it comes to casting your ballot, exercising your democratic right to vote. And I would like to see the paper ballot stay for those who wish to use it. As Counselor Gurrell made clear, our numbers were seriously low last year across the province. That may not be the case next year. It may be just the opposite. But there are about three demographics that'll encompass all the people who could care less about using electronics to vote. When it comes to their vote, they have every bit as much a right to cast their right to vote as anybody who knows how to use electronics. For that reason, I'll drop my argument, but I would like to see the paper ballots stay.
Okay, I have Counselor Maybe, then Counselor Gurrell.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. I too believe in the paper ballot. And I always have, and I've always fought for that every election year. I have some parents who don't even own a computer. Their cellphone, they hardly ever use of the cell service there, and even their own landline barely works. So we have people in our community who do not have the feasibility or even the inclination to use those devices. And the other thing is, at the polling station, again, to the twenty fourteen, I happened to be at the one in Gatton Aqui, and there were no paper ballots. They were forcing people to go through. There were thirty people standing there to vote. Half of them left. That doesn't help our situation and the democratic way that which was brought forward. So I I and the other point is, the federal and provincial don't use electronic voting. It's all paper. So I know that the intel vote is very good, and I've, you know, it's good to see your slip go in and it counts it. But it's quick, it's easy, and all the people of vintage know how to check the box and make it happen. And they feel comfortable with that and feel that their voice has been heard, and that's why we need to keep that. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Gurrell.
And once again, through you, your worship, just a different topic, but just for people who are seasonal residents. And to make perfectly clear, seasonal residents can vote as long as Canadian citizens, and they have some property in in the township. So people can vote throughout North America? Is that correct?
Throughout the world, yes.
Throughout the world, that's right. I guess I should be more global on today's world.
So they can electronically vote throughout the world. They they'll get it in the mail to their mailing address that they get their tax bill at, and they can they can vote that way.
And I did see on, I think, Facebook today that the township put out a little notice, hey, make sure you're on the elector list. Congratulations to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, follow-up question, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. The other thing is the the amount of polling stations. And I know back in the twenty fourteen, we had several across the the whole borough, whereas the last election, we ended up with one or maybe even two, which I found was maybe a little light, because even as pointed out, the transportation for everybody to get there. But also, if you have an increased amount of people coming to that polling station, then you've got a big crowd, and getting them all through in a timely manner is going to be a an effect on the outcast or outcome of the election. So I think we do need to have two or more still stations around to deflect the the masses that may come.
Okay, follow up, Deputy Mayor Foddy.
Thank you, worship, through you. Because we're on this voting conversation, can I ask the clerk to explain why the township is advertising that everybody needs to register before next August to vote? Are residents not automatically in the system anymore?
Through you, your worship. No, oftentimes they're not automatically in the system if they're a renter, if they've changed their address. There are several different reasons why a voter may not be on the voting list. So it's it's a really good idea to go and check. You can log in, you can use your your personal data to make sure that you're on that list. That ensures that you get that mail to your correct address as well that allows you the chance to vote. Now, of course, if somebody were to come to a poll, an in-person poll, and say, I didn't get my voter card, staff would go through the motions to make sure that they had the chance to vote, make sure that they were eligible to vote and had the chance to vote if they were allowed to. But we're seeing a shift as well this year in the portal that's being used. It's no longer MPAC that's giving us our voters list. It's it's Elections Ontario. So we expect some growing pains through that information exchange as well. So that's why, yeah, that's why we're we're pushing out early and often to make sure that that you are registered to vote. It doesn't mean you can't vote if you aren't registered on the day of. It just makes it extremely more easy to to vote and get all of the information that you should be getting.
Okay, and I assume we're gonna send some type of a notice in a tax bill earlier rather than late next year to inform residents of the same information?
Yes, absolutely, we can, we can do that.
We, well, we would have, so voting would be happening in late October, so there'd be a tax bill in September to sort of a last push, but we would have one in the spring and March as well, so. But if anybody's dealt with any Elections Ontario, you know that it doesn't. I've I've gone to a vote and I've not been on the list, and I'm like, I've lived here for twenty-five years. Well, actually, I've only not lived here for three of my entire life, but anyway. So it's it's a good idea to check the voters' list and make sure that you're on, for sure. I have no other hands up, so I might make a suggestion based on the comments made by council this evening. The way the motion reads, and I'll refer to the clerk, if we remove the first section of the motion, but that the second section recommends that you approve the sole sourcing, that we approve the sole sourcing of Intellavote, which is part of the, of the voting system anyways, we would be bringing back a further, if we remove the first part of the motion, that we would come back with a subsequent plan for paper ballots based on tonight's discussion, correct?
Sure. Um, and yeah, if if you want some more information or whatever it is, just.
So I'm just thinking for simplicity this evening. So I would be looking for an amendment to remove the first half of the motion that's at hand. Um, I have deputy mayor Fodi and seconded by councillor Antoine Hartley. So it would be, the motion would only read as follows if we remove the first section. Um, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approves sole sourcing and Intellavote systems, Inc. for the provision of e-voting systems in the twenty twenty-six municipal election and direct staff to move forward with other municipalities within the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville to engage their services. So that's what the amended motion would read. So um, we're just removing the first paragraph of the motion.
Did you want to vote on the first portion of the paragraph separately tonight as well?
The amendment does that for you.
It just leaves that in limbo. Do I, how do I bring it back?
That's why I.
Sorry.
Okay, so how do you want to do it? Because the amendment was moving.
Yeah, we can split them in two. You can do the first part. And if that is approved, it's approved. If it's denied, then we go with both.
That gives you clear direction. So instead of having uh deputy mayor Fodi and councillor Antoine Hardy amend uh amend it, we're splitting it?
You can, you can amend it to take that portion out and the second that and the third that will create a new resolution.
Okay, so the amendment is removing the third that and then we'll vote on the first two thats. Sorry, does everybody have it in front of them so they know what I'm talking about? Sorry, I I'm just trying to, I understand what the clerk's asking because then if we vote on the two first portion, the first portion of the motion, then she has clear direction that it is not, if we were to vote against it, that we're not to move forward and then we can provide subsequent direction, okay? So the amendment to, is to re- uh, remove the third that and then we'll split it out as a second, as a subsequent motion, if everybody's okay with that. Okay, so the amendment is to remove the third that and vote separately on that.
Second and third, are we still?
No.
Okay.
Right, right, sorry.
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Okay, so um, all in favor of the amended, uh, the amendment, I should say. And all opposed to the amendment? Okay, so that is passed. So the amended motion reads, and this is moved by councillor Kelman, seconded by councillor Gurrell, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the clerk's recommendation to move to fully electronic by telephone and internet voting for the twenty twenty-six municipal election and that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve to advance in-person electronic by telephone and internet voting locations and to in-person electronic by telephone and internet voting locations on election day. All those in favor of the separate motion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Got it. And we're carried, uh, or sorry, it's defeated, I should say. So the original motion uh of the first two thats is defeated. Okay, so we will be entertaining a second motion. I need a mover and a seconder. So deputy mayor Fodi and then councillor Gurrell. That the committee of the whole recommends that council approves sole sourcing and Intellavote systems, Inc. for the provision of e-voting services in the twenty twenty-six municipal election and direct staff to move forward with other municipalities within United Counties of Leeds and Grenville to engage their services. All those in favor. All those opposed and that is carried. Okay. And we're moving on to staff reports. There is none this evening. We have two information items, letter from Jamie Cox on behalf of the Greater Village Estates area and eleven point two general notice of growth management study for the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville. So discussion on any of the information items at hand? I have no hands up. So moving to rise and report minutes from committees, working groups and local boards, there is four reports there uh from C- CRCA, uh Economic Enhancement and Revitalization, Recreation Working Group and the TLTI Library Board. Any discussion or comments in regards to those committee and local boards? Go ahead councillor Kelman.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I just wanted to make note of one thing so that all of council is aware that came up at two of those meetings that happened in the same week. Um, there has been an issue inland Hurst End and Seale East Bay with um used needles being disposed of in public places on township property. It it came up first at the library board meeting because some have been found outside of the Lind- Lindhurst Library and um there's also been reports on social media of them being found in the park in Seale East Bay. So um staff are uh uh we, uh, when we discussed it at the Recreation Working Group, staff are on it and looking into ways of addressing this issue, both uh with indoor and outdoor sheriff's disposal boxes. So I just wanted to thank staff for that. But it's came up very suddenly. I think it's a very serious issue, so it's something we need to address.
Uh, the acting C A O has something to add to that.
Thank you. Just to add to that, um, we've been, we've reviewed the matter with health and safety. We've been in touch with the health unit. We're looking at training for staff from a health and safety perspective in terms of ensuring that they have adequate safety training to ensure that they know how to deal with these situations and properly remove the waste if it is discovered. In addition to that, we have purchased or in the process of getting all of the necessary P P E to make sure that all of our operations vehicles are by law enforcement, are building inspectors, anybody that's in the field has the proper P P E should they encounter this situation. Uh, and we are looking to set up training with all staff, including the library staff if, because if they run into these situations, they need to know how to handle it. So um we are actively working on pulling all of this together, this information and safety training for staff. I would put out there that if members of the public do encounter this, to please con- and it's on township property, to please contact us so that we can have properly trained municipal employees to address the situation.
Thank you. Go ahead, deputy mayor Foni.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to our acting C A O. Do we have current drop boxes for disposable needles? Or are we allowed to put them out in the public access? Or yet they need to be located in a building?
So through you, we've, we've been having these discussions with the health unit. Um, there are some locations in the town where we do have the sharps drop boxes, but they're interior. Uh, it's more than likely that in most cases, if this is gonna happen, it's being used after hours or individuals are not necessarily inside our facilities at the time that this is happening. So we're talking to the health unit about what we do in terms of putting sharps facilities outside. It's not as simple as just getting a sharps box and leaving it out somewhere because it is biohazard waste in terms of, it has to be managed properly. So um, there's, there's a lot more involved than just putting up a sharps container. So that's what we're working on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the minutes from these committees and working groups? I have no other hands up. Any notices of motion? Go ahead councillor Kelman.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I am going to be bringing a notice of motion um regarding our conversation that we had in July about uh septic reinspection programs. So I will be asking staff to bring a report back to council about that.
Okay. Any other notices of motion? I have no others. State statements or announcements from councillors. Go ahead councillor Mayby.
Thank you, madam mayor and through you. Um, one of the Terry Fox, September fourteenth, Thousand Island at Brockport um Community Hall, which uh celebrated their hundredth birthday of this Little Red Schoolhouse, which was very well attended. It was a great event. And Terry Fox in Gannon Aquie at ten o'clock on the same fourteenth of September. Again, the Turkey Fair as most know, the twentieth. Gans Art Festival on the twenty-first, which I will be participating in, and it's an all weekend event for those people. Um, one interesting one, um, I noticed that on our signs at the entrance to the townships, there used to be a fire ban sign that actually had whether, whether fire ban was on or not, or what state it was in. And I noticed that they aren't there. Um, I thought they were a very good reminder for everybody to know where we stood as a fire ban in our township. And with our recent dryness that we had this summer, it may have been a a very um visual deterrent for a lot of people. A lot of people behave themselves, but uh you could smell smoke from time to time around. Tried to find a couple of them myself, but I never did find them. Uh, so I, I think it should be reinstated possibly on our sign somewhere uh about the degree of fire ban that is required in our township. I see the chief is there.
Chief is online, I believe. Chief?
Yes, uh, through your worship. Uh, we've been talking about uh the signs and when we, when the uh when the signs were all changed out, uh, a lot of, all the ninety percent of the fire ban signs were uh kind of falling apart. Um, our plan is, was to uh look at putting uh new banners on the bottom of the signs, uh directing people to the burn uh to the burnpermits.com. Uh, what we find is uh with the burnpermits.com, you get a notification when the level changes. Every time the level changes, uh you get a notification. Um, it's working well for keeping uh people informed and and if there's no change, the the level doesn't go up or down. Uh, but we're, we're certainly looking at um putting something on each of the entry signs uh to direct people to the burn, burn ban site.
Uh, just as a follow-up then, uh, chief, can you not actually put something there that says full fire ban or partial fire ban? Again, it's a visual and as I stated earlier tonight, there are people who are not online and we know that our, our internet in the community is a little, little off for some people. So I still think a visual sign is, is still worth its weight in gold, particularly in this situation.
Uh, yes, through your worship. Um, so sorry, you also get a phone call, like depending on how you've put your burn permit in, you also get a phone call or whatever. Um, we can certainly do that. It just accounts for drive time for the burn ban. We've been very fortunate this year, um, only having to change it a couple of times, but every time we change the level, we've got to send somebody around the township to flip those signs up and down and that accounts for better part of a day by the time we're all over the township. So we can certainly look at that, but we're getting good compliance with our burn ban or with our burn bylaw and our uh burn permits. Um, we haven't really had too many major issues so far, even with the ban.
Well, it would only take one to make it worth it. It only take one to make it worth it. That's all I'm gonna say on that. So that's done. The other, one other thing I wanted to me uh to actually say was um for those who were able to watch The Amazing Race Canada, it was a very good showing of our area. I was thrilled to see the aerial shots that showed our islands, the bridge, the town, even Kingston, all of our area. It was astounding to me to see how they portrayed it because I had been watching the show for quite a while myself, actually. And to see the aerial shots they got of our area here were some of the best I've seen the whole show do. And again, it was uh, I think we'll see tourism uh flourish in the years to come because people who are outside of our area, who don't know the beauty we live in, will certainly uh make it a point to come here in years to come. So again, my hat is off to Jan Burell of the uh Visitor Center and the uh organizer of actually communicating with The Amazing Race Canada to actually get them here. So uh my hat is off to her and we owe her a large debt to bringing this wonderful event to our area.
Did you mean Jennifer Burell?
Yeah, Jennifer Burell. What did I say?
Something else.
Okay, sorry.
Just wanted to double check.
No, Jennifer Burell. Yeah, sorry. I, I was going, what did I say? It's been one of those days.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure we give credit, credit where credit's due.
Very much.
So uh councillor Antoine Hartley.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, um, just a heads up that uh on September fifteenth at seven thirty, there was going to be a Early History of Eastern Ontario um presentation at the Lansdowne United Church, ten thousand years of indigenous history. Um, an opportunity for us to learn a little bit about the indigenous folks in our community. I'm sorry. And just to say that uh A M O, when we attended A M O, there was um an indigenous reconciliation action plan introduced, uh which is going to be a roadmap for municipalities uh to foster reconciliation with our indigenous folks. So um if you are looking for something to do on the fifteenth at seven thirty, I'm gonna be there uh because I think it's going to be quite an education.
Awesome. And then I've got councillor Lackey and then councillor Kelman, did you have your hand up as well? Go ahead.
Through you, your worship. Actually, this belongs in the item twelve, um, but um I'll sneak it in here. On uh August twenty-seventh, uh, we had an O P P detachment board meeting.
Um, oh.
Um, I will follow up with the clerk to put some reports maybe on for next meeting or.
You not get the O P P re- okay, so part of it is a communication from the board, so they should be sending a, a copy of the minutes to the clerk as well. So next board meeting, if you could just make sure she's on the mailing.
So uh Simon Hardy is uh gonna be no longer our commander. Um, he's been seconded to R C M P in the intelligence area. Um, acting in his behalf will be Brian Jones.
Okay.
Will be our acting commander. And I do have the reports as far as the budget. It's a whopper. I think we bumped it up to about nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six.
Nine thousand dollar increase?
No, that's the total.
Oh, I was like, what?
For the, for the board.
Sorry, I was like, I'm not, I'm missing something here. I was just gonna.
Divided by ten.
Yeah.
Yes, I love that bill.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure.
And I will get the information to the clerk.
Awesome, thanks. Councillor Kelman?
Thank you, your worship and through you. Uh, I am, I am gonna, I've started writing a report, just a brief report on my experience at A M O, which was excellent again this year, but I didn't get it timed. I'll have it for the next meeting, hopefully. Um, I just wanted to mention that I couldn't find a deadline online, but I think that nominations are still being accepted for the Thousand Islands Gann Chamber uh business excellence awa- excellence awards. The reception when the awards will be handed out is at the end of September on the twenty-fifth. So if anyone would like to nominate a business or an organization or an individual anywhere within the township, they don't have to be a member of the chamber to be nominated. I would suggest the nomination forms are all online on the chamber's website. I would suggest getting those nomination forms in as soon as possible. And one last thing, the Saint Lawrence, the inaugural Saint Lo- Saint Lawrence Writers Festival is this weekend in Brockville. It's featuring a lot of local authors. So if you would like to see the schedule of events, uh, you can go online and find those.
Any other announcements or uh statements? Okay, so um I'm gonna try to be brief. Rockport one hundred year celebration was absolutely lovely and uh a beautiful gift that will be long lasting uh was uh made by friends of Rockport uh to the schoolhouse. It was a stained glass representation of the schoolhouse and it was quite lovely. It's great to see uh former students and locals alike there celebrating a hundred years. Uh, obviously starting out as a schoolhouse, but then becoming a, a community center, which is so widely used uh by the locals. Um, Turkey Fair uh obviously is coming up third Saturday in September, uh always a wonderful time. Um, I too was at A M O. Uh, I unfortunately didn't get to see as many of the presentations and the speakers mainly because between uh delegations for our own municipality, which I will speak to here in a second, as well as um county and Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, I was meeting with a number of ministers, the attorney general, minister of health, um, minister of rural affairs. It was, it was pretty rammed. Um, so it's always great and I'm glad that both councillors um are, were able to enjoy it and get. Um, so it's always great and I'm glad that both counselors um are, were able to enjoy it and get so much out of it. We did have some conversations about some of the things they got to, to see that I wasn't able to, so. Um, the last two things, uh, probably the most important, uh, I had the ability to go to the Ivy Lee Dock on Saturday morning uh to witness the island pump demonstration by the, the firefighters who um, who, I think there was three or four of them on the dock that day, along with about thirty islanders and about six children running around with their life jackets on. Nothing made me happier, so. Um, uh, it was really well attended. Uh, people were very responsive in light of the drought that we've had this summer. It's been a stark uh awakening for many of us of fire safety. And it was great to see the kids there, understanding, you know, making a plan to get out. What do we do if there's a fire, especially on the island? Um, so just amazing response from the islanders and the Thousand Islands Association. And this is my shameless plug for them. Um, and I will say shameless plug because they are the ones that came up with this idea for the pumps years ago. And unfortunately, during this crazy weather that we've had, um, many of those pumps were found to not op- operate anymore. So it's been a, a wake-up call for many to replace them, to learn how to maintain them and test them multiple times throughout the summer, um, as well as getting the kids involved. So it was really well attended and I was really grateful that our fire folk were out uh working so hard on a Saturday morning uh to make sure that everybody knows what's going on. Lastly, um, just as important is to say thank you to the provincial government for the three point three million dollar check that we received in regards to the water storage project here in Lansdowne. The, this is the largest investment that the province has ever made in this particular municipality. Um, regarding pro- projects of any size. Um, we have waited an extremely long time. Uh, many of you who sat on the previous council alongside of me know that I have been extremely frustrated by times that we haven't seemed to get much traction. However, it's starting to come. And this uh particular announcement was very humbling because it will allow us to not only support the current residents, um, but also future development in the village. Um, there was a comment online which uh I would like to address right now. Um, which is to say uh some criticism of the township of why some things are not getting built here in the village. What I have to say to that individual who made the comment is that the municipality does not finance develop, developments. So should someone get the permits and the ability to build, we do not provide financing or the ability to move the project along uh or provide sales assistance or what have you. Whatever is holding it up, it has nothing to do with the municipality. So I just would like to have that on record that we are not holding up any development in the village of Lansdowne. Um, but there are more announcements to come in the area, which I cannot speak about yet. Um, but I think that many residents will be quite pleased when the announcement is made. Um, and we still have some grant applications, Director Holiday. Um, we are still waiting to hear back on a couple of applications from the federal government as well. That is correct. Okay, so we're waiting patiently with bated breath and very hopeful hearts. So um am I missing anything, folks? Okay. Oh, delegation to AMO, thank you for reminding me. So uh as our municipality, we had a delegation with the Minister of Transportation in regards to the safety of Highway thirty-two and fifteen. Um, we also have laid the groundwork to go back and have a further meeting with the um minister in regards to the entrance exit of Ivy Lee on the Parkway. Um, we are gathering the data points that they require in order to consider uh speed reduction uh on the Parkway, but we will be having that delegation at Roma in January, I believe. So uh, having said that, the delegation regarding Highway thirty-two and fifteen, there was two asks. One is to change the speed limit and reduce it between the, the two hills coming down into the dip so that um anybody turning at that corner is not putting themselves into peril, especially with now with the fire station. We've also asked for um lights to be installed indicating whether there are firefighters coming to or from or fire equipment leaving the station. And the province has agreed to put up those lights um immediately. So um, our Director of Operations will be um uh, will be following up with them and where they are reviewing the speed reduction request at this point in time. So um, that is the good news on our delegation. Go ahead, Counselor Meeby.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I was wondering about the four oh one light, whether it's gonna blink soon or not.
Go ahead, Counselor, Deputy Director Holiday. Okay.
Thank you, through your worship. Um, I can speak to that one. Um, actually, both the County Road Three and the County Road Two um highway access points um is being considered as part of the, the three lane design project that, that they're working on right now. Um, so we sat in on the technical steering committee with, with the designers and, and MTO. Uh, we actually weren't in, for whatever reason, on County Road thirty-two or, or County Road Two. Um, but we, we made it very clear what our concerns were with, with County Road Two, um, the access coming off the highway um, as well as County Road Three, where you come off the highway and you can't see because of the guide rail, et cetera. Um, so we've made those, those very clear and that will be considered as they move forward at both those locations. Not only uh a, a potential speed reduction of County Road Two over the four oh one. Um, we explained the lighting issue and the visibility, being able to, to uh merge onto County Road Two off of the highway um for County, County Road Two and County Road Three both.
Okay. Okay. There we go. So that's our update. Uh, thank you for the. Uh, there is no closed session this evening, and so we will be adjourning the Committee of the Whole meeting. And then uh we'll take a short break and then come back for the special council meeting uh after that. So the motion comes forward for adjournment from Counselor Gurrell and seconded by Counselor Kelman that council, or the Committee of the Whole adjourn at seven fifteen PM. And we will reconvene at seven twenty-five PM uh for special council. All those in favor of adjournment? All those opposed? And it is carried.